All right, it's seven o'clock and we advertised that we would have a public hearing immediately prior to the county commission meeting regarding Planning Commission request. On December the 12th, 2022, the Bedford County Regional Planning Commission unanimously recommended a six-month moratorium on all major subdivisions and planned unit developments in order to provide time to study our currently adopted subdivision regulations and zoning resolution for possible amendments deemed important to the processes and the general welfare of the citizens of Bedford County. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak or ask a question regarding this? If you would raise your hand or stand up, we bring you to the podium to speak. This item is on the agenda tonight for the commission to either vote up or down to do a six-month moratorium, so that's why there is a public here prior to that. And this would be your opportunity to speak if you had a question. You most likely would not be recognized to speak during the actual meeting. Okay, hearing and seeing none, I will declare the public hearing closed. And if you'll stand, we'll open the meeting and we'll have prayer provided by Father Francis, or sorry, Father Edwin Cardona from St. Williams Church.
So I will propose to open this meeting to hear these words of the gospel, mainly thinking that we serve with the heart and we serve for the good of the people. That if this is true, that many of us, of you, of we, do our living by serving, at the end does know the goal. Our goal should be to do good, to do good to our neighbors. So from the Holy Gospel according to Matthew, Jesus said to his disciples, "When the Son of Man comes in his glory and all the angels with him, he will sit upon his glorious throne and all the nations will be assembled before him, and he will separate them one from another as a shepherd separates the sheep from the goats. He will place the sheep on his right and the goats on his left." Then the king will say to those on his right, "Come you who are blessed by my father; inherit the kingdom prepared for you from the foundation of the world; for I was hungry and you gave me food; I was thirsty and you gave me drink; a stranger and you welcomed me; naked and you clothed me; sick and you cared for me; in prison and you visited me." Then the righteous will answer him and say, "Lord, when did we see you hungry and feed you, or thirsty and give you drink? When did we see you a stranger and welcome you, or naked and clothed you? When did we see you ill or in prison and visit you?" And the king will say to them in reply, "Amen, I say to you: whatever you did for one of these least brothers of mine, you did for me." The Gospel of the Lord. Blessed are you, Lord God of mercy, who through your son gave us a marvelous example of charity and the great commandment of love for one another. Send down your blessings on these your servants, who so generously devote themselves to helping others. When they are called or in times of need, let them faithfully serve you in their neighbor. We ask this to Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen, thank you. If you'll join me in the pledge of allegiance. The meeting will now officially be opened by the Sheriff, Austin Sweeney. Thank you, you can be seated. All right, first item would be roll call by the county clerk, Donna Thomas.
Commissioner Anderson, Commissioner Boutwell, Commissioner Boyette.
Here.
Commissioner Brothers.
Here.
Commissioner Epperson.
Here.
Commissioner Farrar.
Here.
Commissioner Hooker.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Maddox.
Here.
Commissioner Neely.
Here.
Commissioner Pinson.
Here.
Commissioner Sanders.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Adam Thomas.
Here.
Commissioner Mark Thomas.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Vick.
Here.
Commissioner Yaki.
Here.
Eighteen present, zero absent.
All right, next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the commission meeting from January the 10th, 2023.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion is second. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, here, none. Next item under elections and confirmations is the notaries for March.
Approve.
Okay, we accept one is approved and another one second? All right, outstanding. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next item, so have a few appointments tonight. Under the Planning Commission, I have two reappointments of requests for Jeff Sweeney and Reed Farmer, and I have a new appointment to take the place of Steve Feldhouse of Tom McLean. Would you like to vote on those individually, or would you accept those as presented?
Make a motion, they all be approved at one time?
Second. Commissioner Epperson.
Mr. Mayor, I had a question. I don't, I don't know, I mean, that's fine with me that they are approved at one time, but on the Planning Commission, Mr. Ben Chapman had reached out to me and said he thought that that would probably go through the Rules and Legislative Committee, and then he saw it was going to be on tonight, so he asked if he would be able to be also in the nominations for the Planning Commission.
Those nominations, I don't believe, come from the floor. They're from the mayor's office, so he would have needed to contact my office for that consideration. All right, so we have a motion as second. Are there any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next item is appointments of the, or reappointment of the beer board for the next year. The current chairman is Bart Williams, Wayne Hart, Amy McCullough, Larry Joyce, and Lisa Carden.
Move to approve.
Second. All right, any other comments or questions? All in favor? Any opposed? All right. And then we have an appointment from the UT Ag Extension Advisory Committee, and they've got some requirements associated with, with the people that they, that they ask us to consider. So I would like to put Linda Yaki's name forward for the 5th District. I believe this will be her third term. Sylvia Pinson from the 7th District is serving for her first term. Troy Thompson would be his first term. Russ Ustleton from the 4th District, this would be his third term. Janet Boyce from the 9th District would be her third term, and Barbara Troxler from the 1st District, it would be her second term.
Make a motion to be approved.
Second.
All right, any comments or questions? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, thank you, moving on. Under presentations, Securist Technology, the sheriff's office has asked to withdraw that presentation as well as the actual motion that would be on the floor tonight. They're going to postpone this till they do their other bids later in the year. All right, next.
Question, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hooker.
Will that come back to the commission, or will that go back to the law enforcement committee before being brought back?
It'll go through the standard process of bidding, and then if the bid is more than one year, it would come back to here just like this one found its way here. But for now, it turns out that the phone systems and the other, and we can have them speak on it, all timeout apparently in August, and so it was thought that in light of all that's going on, we'd just rebid comprehensively in August. But again, it will wind back up in front of this body unless it's a one-year or less contract.
Just to clarify, what was the reason it had to go through law enforcement this first time, and why would it not go back, since this would be a different contract process?
Yeah, the reason it come before the commission in the first place is because it was a greater-than-one-year contract. It was, and so if this winds up being a more-than-one-year contract in August, it will come back before the commission. It could have went before any of the committees. It probably might have been most correct to have actually went to the Financial Management Committee, but, but either way, you have to have a path to the commission floor. And so it, because they report to the law enforcement committee of their normal activities at the time, I thought it made most sense just to make you guys aware of it at that time, but they, either, either location would be all right. Commissioner Maddox.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to understand a little bit more why it was withdrawn. I don't understand. There's been a lot of talk about this particular program and just, it's been on the table, it's been off the table, so I'd like to understand more the reason why we are where we are tonight with that, with that program.
Well, it's the present, we're at the presentation level and that's been withdrawn. And so, as cited, unless the sheriff would like to get up and make some other statement regarding it, they're going to wait and bid in August whenever their other resources would be up for consideration. Please go to the podium there. Can you hold the button down?
Okay. The mayor's basically right. I wish we could, but Securist, the, we have our phones and stuff come up in August and we just think it's better, and I think Robert advised us, and you correct me if I'm wrong, Robert, to do them at the same time, so that's the way we're going to do it.
Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Sheriff, I appreciate that. So one of my concerns is, well, let me just ask the question. So when it comes back up in August, will we or anybody here have the opportunity to weigh in on whether tablets should be in the jail system, or will this be placed in the contract with any sort of debate or discussion or vote?
We plan, and I know this is not, I'll let the mayor, he can probably answer that question better than me, but we will have a representative here for Securist, he'll fly up from Texas and explain it. There's a lot of misconceptions, and I hope when he gets here and everybody will listen and he can answer questions, and we'll attempt to answer questions. But it will be much better understood that this is not something that's, you get on the internet, this is their own thing, they control it, there's no Get No Google or anything like that. There's so many programs, it would take 30 minutes, but it's everything from religious to educational to entertainment and everything in between, and he would do a much better job than I can explain it. I think everybody would feel more comfortable. But actually, all we're asking for is permission for the three-year contract.
Correct, that would be what would be in the debate, but it's withdrawn currently. Correct, all right, thank you. Moving on, next item under resolutions, Resolution 23-15, a resolution instituting a six-month moratorium on all planned unit development and major subdivisions with more than five individual parcels. And this was placed on the agenda by the Rules and Legislative Committee. Again, this is what we had the public hearing in regards to.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion is second, we're open for discussion.
Do you know if that was with favorable recommendation or no recommendation from rules? I mean.
You, you're on that committee.
I know, but I slept since then, I don't remember.
I'm not sure, I'm not positive either. I, I thought it was, but yeah, I'm not positive either, but, okay. Commissioner Vick.
Mr. Chairman, first, let me thank the Planning Commission for the job they're doing and the job they've done, because we trust them, we need them, they're very important. And I completely understand the desire of the Planning Commission to create some time and space to craft amendments to the zoning manual, because those zoning manuals have to reflect our community. And we also know the county commission has amended our zoning manual numerous times over the past several years. In fact, since 2010, the zoning manual has been amended, and the commission has voted on 11 separate zoning amendments. Now, these amendments have dozens of items in them. In fact, we had a technical correction that we voted on that had 54 amendments, and this commission passed these amendments. There's plenty of evidence of the good work that our planning commission's doing and it's nonstop work. And as you know, not once have we ever issued a moratorium in the history of Bedford County. So why are we now asking our craftsmen and small businessmen to sacrifice their livelihoods and quality of life when it appears we can solve these problems on a case-by-case basis? What's different? I don't understand what's changed. The voters sent us up here to see the big picture, not react to the special interest groups. We're obligated to do what's right for 50,000 people, not a group of 20 or 30. Do you know that every single house is built, on average, that there are 90 individual hands that touch that house? We issue this moratorium, we're taking food out of the mouths of those very people, our neighbors, our friends, the electricians, the plumbers, the painters, the roofers, the landscapers, the building supply house on the corner, the bankers who make the loans. We're delaying people to purchase or sell a house from one of our neighborhood realtors. Construction is the single largest employer in Bedford County, it touches everyone. And this is a short-sighted solution which has nothing but long-term consequences. We have rules, we have a zoning manual, we've adopted it, these are our rules. And just because you disagree with the existing rules doesn't give anyone the right to withhold those same rights of their neighbors, who by the way, spent their time and their money complying with our rules. Now, I believe in property rights, I believe in limited government, I believe in self-reliance, and I believe in the sanctity of contracts. And when we are overreaching, and that's exactly what this resolution is doing, we're dictating where we don't have a right to put these things in place. Truthfully, many here think by passing this resolution, we're hurting the big developers and those out-of-town builders. Well, believe me, we're not hurting the big guy, but instead, what we're doing is whacking the little guy square in the pocketbook. Now, Mr. Chairman, this is bad business for the little guy, it is terrible business for the self-employed person, and these are the very people who are the backbone of this county. We pass this resolution, you're basically saying local government is keeping them from the opportunity to make a living for six months. This whole thing is nothing more than continuation of COVID thinking and government Bigfooting. And I would urge my colleagues, don't vote yes on this resolution, vote no, let the Planning Commission do their job. I've spoken with the chairman of the Planning Commission and Director White, they are 80% complete now. It is foolish for us to try to put some kind of moratorium to stop our local business people and our local entrepreneurs, our self-employed people from depriving them of the opportunity to make a living. I would urge everyone to vote no on this resolution. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Hooker.
Yes, could, Chris, Chris White, do you mind standing up? I just wanted to address some questions coming from planning, if you don't mind. Number one, where did this moratorium originate from? Who, who brought that up? Who, what was the reason behind it, and what were the thought process going into it?
Let me make sure I know how to do this. Okay. Well, you know, it derived in the planning commission, I think as a result of, we have, we have a set of tools, namely, the planned unit development, that I think that, at least at this point in time, most, several of the commission members here seated in front of me are confused about, don't like, for different reasons. And, you know, it's, it became obvious to the planning commission that it'd be very difficult for anybody to follow all of those guidelines that we've created and spend all the money that they spend with engineers and surveyors and professionals to get this thing, get, you know, get a plan before you guys, before the planning commission, and then they go through a lot of steps that way, and study sessions and planning commission meetings, and then of course, on to committees, and then ultimately to this body. And it just seems that it may be an impossibility for something like that to pass, despite the fact that they're following all these rules that we established. And they, I think the planning commission felt like it was time to kind of retool a little bit, give the commission something that was a little more palatable, that, that does make sense, that achieves the goals that the planned unit development initially set out to achieve. And so the, it came about that the idea, in order to do that, would be to have a moratorium that would give my office and my staff time to really kind of take a deep dive and focus on those, on making some amendments. So, you know, from my own personal perspective, I, I think I could go either way. I mean, I think a moratorium, it benefits us because it gives us a little time and a little space. I think all along, we, at the planning commission level, have decided that whenever we were done, we would come to this body and ask for an amendment to, to lift the moratorium if we, if we don't need it. So if we're able to get through this thing a lot quicker, we've always planned to lift or ask to lift the moratorium as quickly as possible. On the other hand, you know, I think Commissioner Vick also makes a point, and it did, we're not going to get through this without having some effect on some people. And so, you know, from that perspective, I'm kind of neutral on it. I, in a selfish way, I think I benefit from a little time and a little space, but, to do that, but on the other hand, I will say that I've been quite productive. I mean, I have been very, you know, fruitful and, and been able to spend some time and do quite a bit of work. The planning commission, I'll get the first, the first resolution for an amendment will come before the planning commission this next meeting, so, that I've already prepared and I actually completed yesterday. So I've got a series of those, I'm continuously working on those things every day, and so, yeah, it can go either way. You're not going to get through it without having some impact on the local community, business community. But at the same time, you know, it does create some time and space to, to take a deep dive. So I think, you know, it's the will of the commission, it's the will of the commission, but yeah, it derived in the planning commission level after the vote of the planned unit development, that's how it all started.
Okay, just a couple more questions. Was it encouraged or asked for from any commissioner that's outside the planning commission?
You know, that I couldn't answer, not that I'm aware of.
And then on top of that, from the planning commission, y'all, as a planning commission group, and through your office, felt like that this was something that was necessary to go through, and you can see how quickly it, it took to get here, or how long it took to get here. Y'all passed this in December, we're now voting on it in February. Same thing with this new resolution that you're wanting to come through. When you get done with it, it's not going to come immediately, it's going to come after a while. So I do think this is something that, that I have heard from both planning commission members as well as your office through coming to these meetings, that this is something that would be beneficial for y'all to be able to get this correct, and then that way, because this is one of the larger changes you've had in a while.
Well, that's correct. I mean, we're looking at it, I mean, honestly, because the idea of the moratorium came about, it, it really caused me to really think about this in a more comprehensive manner. Maybe, I, I'm probably looking at some changes and some amendments that I would propose that maybe I wouldn't have if I didn't have that amount of time. But, you know, the, the zoning resolution is a living, breathing document. Every year, we experience applications and people's wishes and desires and dreams that we never thought of, or that previous planning commissions never thought of either. A good example would be short-term rental Airbnb. I mean, who would have 10 years ago ever even heard of Airbnb? So we're constantly having to tweak and amend and make amendments to it, and we have. I think, you know, we've made quite a few amendments just in my tenure. So it's something we do not every year, but sometimes three times a year, you know? So it, we do it, you know, and we're, we're working on it constantly, whether we have a moratorium or not, so.
Commissioner Sanders.
To your, to your knowledge, do you feel like it's going to take a full six months to do this, or do you feel like it can be done in a shorter period of time and then it could be stopped at that point, or?
Yeah, it's hard to predict, but I, no, I don't think any of us on the planning commission level ever thought it would take a full six months, or maybe some did. Obviously, I guess the, the term came up and it became something that, that was, we ended up passing. But I think, from my perspective, I don't think it'll take six months. I, I think it will be done in a couple of months. But again, it's, it's, it's a lot of work, and, you know, the moratorium, if it were passed today, I mean, you have to keep in mind, I've, I've done quite a bit of work on it so far, and I didn't have a moratorium helping me up until today. So, you know, it's just one of those things, in my position, I spend a lot of time sitting in front of a computer typing all day long, every day, unless I'm answering phone calls or doing other things. So, you know, sometimes I can be more productive than others, but I mean, at the end of the day, the buck kind of stops with me, I'm the one that writes all those ordinances, so. I think we can get done pretty quickly, actually.
All right, Commissioner Boutwell.
You say in here that it's a moratorium for all major subdivisions and planned unit development. Are there some subdivisions or planned unit developments that would be excluded from this resolution? You say all major, how, how do you term what's all major?
Okay, and a major subdivision in our definitions is any subdivision that has more than five lots.
All right, Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to make sure there's no confusion on this, Mr. White, the folks that have already submitted to your office as of today, theirs will proceed, is that correct?
That is correct.
Commissioner Yaki.
Just to help Chris out a little bit from the planning commission, I don't think any of us want to go through what we went through several commissions ago with the PUD situation as it was. And so, the planning commission looked at this and thought, we need a timeout, and this is more comprehensive than just sending through one change here, and then another change here, and another change here. Our philosophy was to make it comprehensive so that everybody gets a full scope of, of everything that's going on. I know, and Chris can correct me, but we're just about through with subdivisions and changes for those, and so, and, and a lot of us have had input, and, and Chris has been working on the others. At the onset of all this, we were, we were adamant that if we did not need this six months, that we would work as hard as we could. Up until the holidays, we, we had done every other week, and so I'm sure we'll start back with that pretty quickly. So our intent is to do this as fast as we can, but to make it comprehensive so that it makes sense to you people who are voting on it as, as one big idea, one big plan, so that we do not have a repeat of that commission meeting that we had. We've, we've taken into consideration the, all the points that the Longview people made, and at the document at that time, we had to move like we had to move as far as the planning commission. This commission moved as it had its will that night. But I guess, as a commissioner, I'm asking to, to give us a timeout, let everybody breathe, let everybody be educated in, in what's in that document, and what everything means now, and where it is, outside the urban growth boundary, inside the urban growth boundary, wherever.
All right, any other comments or questions on the floor before we vote? Commissioner Boutwell.
Your subdivisions, do we normally have in a year that, that we have to approve or, you know, give a green light to?
Well, that fluctuates, but I'm going to say probably on large subdivisions, probably with, say, more than 30 lots, that, that's going to be something we do maybe a couple of times a year. But on, you know, other subdivisions, you know, anything more than six qualifies, and so, I mean, we get quite a few more of those, but I'm going to say all, all affected, you know, probably not more than 20, something like that. So if you have that in a six-month period, you know, 10, maybe?
Subdivisions or houses?
Subdivisions, it doesn't have anything to do with houses.
All right, any other comments? Are we ready to vote? All right, when your names called, vote for, against, yes would be to have the six-month moratorium, no would be to not have the moratorium.
Commissioner Yaki.
Yes.
Commissioner Vick.
No.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Mark Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Adam Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders.
Yes.
Commissioner Pinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Neely.
Yes.
Commissioner Maddox.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hooker.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrar. Commissioner Epperson.
Yes.
Commissioner Brothers.
Yes.
Commissioner Boyette.
Yes.
Commissioner Boutwell.
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson. Does anyone wish to change your vote? Seventeen ayes, one no.
All right, next item, Rules and Legislative Committee, nothing to report. Under Law Enforcement Committee, as stated earlier, the sheriff's office requested to withdraw a consideration of the contract at this time. Next item under Courthouse and Property Committee is surplus of the old jail and just judicial commissioner facility. Again, not the historic jail, but the old jail that we transferred out of.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion is second, open for discussion. Commissioner Epperson.
Is that just the, like, the jail part, or is that the, the property too?
Not, not the property. It was so that we could, and I'm sorry if I didn't make that clear at committee, but this would set us up to be able to go out to bid to see what it would cost to have that disposed of, the building itself. And that would include the old sheriff's house, but not where the last sheriff's office was, because juvenile is still in that area. So this would be the jail itself and the old red brick house, if we're able to do it, and then that would make that ground available for the body to choose what they would or wouldn't want to do with it for the future. choose what they would or wouldn't want to do with it for the future. And it would get us out of the safety situation concern we have. Commissioner Hooker.
Yeah, just, uh, just clarifying the process. So soon as, if we do this tonight, then that allows you to go out and get bids for, or, or the county to go out and get bids for that specific project. Would it then go back to property to kind of talk about those different options before it comes back to commission?
I'm going, I'm going to say yes and no, but let me explain why. I think I can, would say yes or no. What I envisioned by doing surplus here and making sure everybody's on the same page of where we're trying to go to, this would open up for the finance department and those guys to put some bids together, some different options for how we could dispose of it and what the cost would be. We could look at that point then, and I don't know exactly how fast that timeline is, but that's going to then drop real close to, which was part of our timing concept, to prepare us to potentially ask for next year's budget, some funding to deal with it. Now, so there's going to be two ways that you're going to see it is what I, when I said yes and no. Uh, you're going to potentially see the opportunity to decide which one do we think is the best option? And then it's going to, obviously, we don't have money appropriated to dispose of it. So there will be some expense most likely unless they were to give us value for what's inside there that they could scavenge or what have you. And so that would have to show up in the budget for next year, somebody's budget, to actually execute on it. So does that make sense to you? Commissioner Bowel.
Uh, when you say disposed, are you saying demolition?
Yeah, correct. To, to take down, but then it'll have to be hauled off or properly disposed of. Correct.
Um, yeah. Is it, is there an option to put an amendment on this where it is, is required to go back to property so we can have some discussion? I just, when things get here, makes it a little difficult to talk about things specifically, ask questions a little bit deeper into it. Uh, just question about that on the legal.
While you're doing tonight is surplus in the property. So, but once we get that information, I'm happy to come to property committee unless you guys, I mean, there's no magic here. It'll have to show up in the budget, you know, to be handled. So, and it may be cost prohibitive. I mean, I have no idea at this point what it's going to take to do it, but we didn't want to go out and put the bidders through the process and then the commission say, well, wait a minute, we, we didn't have any vision that we would possibly do it. This doesn't guarantee it will happen. It may die because of what we find out in regards to it.
Oh, absolutely. And I appreciate that. I just, I just want the opportunity for everybody to be able to voice their opinion on it, uh, hear other commissioners, uh, outside the property committee be able to speak on that. And then that helps us with our decision-making.
Absolutely. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Here, the next on the agenda is under Financial Management. So Board of Education Budget Amendment Number Two.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Any comments or questions regarding this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next item is under the county's Budget Amendment Number Three.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Open for discussion. Commissioner Neely.
I guess Robert would be the one that could answer these questions. As I was going through here, what exactly, when we talk about a department transfer, are those just within those, um, departments, like the codes, the 5800, the 40, whatever, in that? Or does that money come from somewhere else?
It's between, it's inside the department itself or between two departments. But it's just, uh, in, in and out, basically.
Okay. So under that 58900, under miscellaneous salaries, because some of these seem to be salary increases, why is that under miscellaneous? What are, what are those geared for?
Those were not assigned at the time we did it before, when the budget was passed. So that's why it was placed there and then we'll move it out as necessary. And I think what you're talking about is going to the mayor's budget. And we had an overlap there of two employees and one of them had to be trained. So we had to move some money from that to cover that.
Okay. Actually, there were like four different entries in four different departments and I was just curious. And then under the refunds and reimbursements, I noticed there's not a total, but it seems very high when I go through and pull it out. Where did all those come from? I know some of it was insurance.
Yes. Uh, the major, the big ones are insurance refunds. Then we have refunds from vendors sometimes. Uh, then sometimes we're reimbursed. For, for instance, the city does a reimbursement for hazmat. So that's like $4,100. So it, it varies, but that's what it mainly consists of.
And then I noticed in a couple of areas, there would be a decrease and an increase of the same amount. But then when we got to the bottom line, and one I was particularly looking at was in 54110718, there was a difference there of like $25,231. Where would those funds have come from? And you may have to look at your sheet.
I will have to look to get you that answer.
It was $90,985. It was an increase in the line. It had a MHT grant of 63637, which left 27348. But there was a 25231 decrease and then an increased wash.
Uh, 63? 63,000 of that came from the state of Tennessee and it was an ACH deposit. Um, that was a, I believe that was a grant. And the remainder of that is actually a department transfer or, um, yes, it's number one, so it's a department transfer.
But my question is, where did it come from? Because if you look right above that, there was a 25231 decrease and a 25231 increase. So it's like it was a wash. I was just curious about where it came from.
Okay. It came from the MHT grant. There were refunds and there's department transfers. Those three items is where the money came from. And then we put it back in the budget in that line.
I'll show you what I'm talking about after the meeting.
Sorry, I'm, I'm just not getting it, I guess.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Again, we're voting on the county budget amendment number three. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Here, now, next is the quarterly, quarterly financials.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. Open to the second. We're open for discussion. Questions? Tony. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next is, uh, surplus property of Board of Education.
Motion to approve.
Drew and Sylvia. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. All right. Next, uh, under Memorandums of Understanding, uh, because these are greater than one year, uh, they're required to be on here. This are public safety related. Uh, the first one is memorandum agreement, Rutherford County EMA and BCEMA, uh, regarding the Eagle Bowl Tower. This has to do with communications.
Second.
All right. Motion second. Open for discussion. Questions?
Mr. Mayor, can we just group both of those together? It's with the same county, it's just different locations.
Is, is that acceptable to, okay, sure. Happy to do that.
And just further info, we've been on these towers for years. We just never had an agreement between us. So this makes it legal.
Right. It also ties up for the upcoming TACAN system, correct? So that we make everything uniform.
That's correct. Whenever we go to a new system, then that secures the deal for, for a lot of counties, not just ours.
Okay.
And it's no cost.
Yeah, we like that. All right. So everybody understands that the two are coupled together and we have a motion of second regarding that. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Other business, nothing there. Under announcements, at least, uh, I have noted here that, uh, observing President's Day on Monday, the 20th, so the regular administrative offices will be closed. Happy Valentine's, a great way to spend your evening. Commissioner Yaki.
Uh, I might, I have a question for Chris White. Is the land use hearing still on this Thursday, coming Thursday? Chris?
Land use.
Is the land use?
Meeting.
Maps, public hearings still on for next Thursday?
No, uh, we lost that date. I thought I sent you an email on that, but I guess I didn't. We, we lost that date. Um, um, we found out the, they called me back later and said, even though they had to sign that date to us, that, um, that they already had it pre-booked. So I think March the 7th, but I'll, let me, tomorrow, or actually, you're going to come up and sign some minutes, so, uh, after the meeting and I, I give that to you. And, um, we're, uh, I talked to Zoe a little bit earlier in a previous meeting and she's got my press release. We're getting ready to, to put it out for the public consumption here. It, you know, probably by the end of the week, so.
All right. Any other announcements? All right. We need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.